Good morning. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you bow your head for the prayer. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and encourage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Okay. Is there any public comment regarding pending resolutions? Oh, the minutes approval is not on this agenda.
No, we don't. We don't have them.
Zero. Oh, okay. Any public comment? All right, moving on. Resolutions. Dan, representing Andy Conrad, county engineer?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's see, we have five resolutions for your consideration today. First is authorizing the engineer to advertise for bids for the pavement and plating repair for various roads in Medina County. The second is authorizing the Medina County engineer to advertise for bids for the 441 Thin Overlay in various county roads. The third is authorizing the county engineer to advertise for bids for the 422 Single Chip and Seal on various county roads. The fourth is authorizing the county engineer to advertise for bids for the MC 3000 Single Chip and Seal for various county roads. And the fifth is accepting and awarding a bid for the resurfacing of Fen Road from State Road to...State Road? No, State Route 42 to State Road, sorry.
Move to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jeremy Cinco, sanitary engineer.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
One resolution for consideration today, and that's authorizing the sanitary engineer department to purchase a four-wheel-drive pickup truck.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second. I'm so used to seconding. Go ahead.
Second.
Any discussion? It's only January. Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Holly Murin, human resource director?
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one in maintenance, one at Job and Family Services, and one in Retirement and Finance.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Scott Miller, county administrator.
Good morning. I have 12 resolutions for you today. First resolution is amending appropriation measure. This is increasing resolutions in various funds and accounts. The next is also amending appropriations. This is through the transfer of those appropriations in various funds and accounts. Third resolution is authorizing expenditure adjustments. The fourth is authorizing revenue adjustments. The fifth resolution is authorizing revenue adjustments for these proceeds from the sale of county property. The sixth resolution is authorizing a cash transfer for the Medina County Emergency Management Agency. This is the amount that we subsidize them for, that we budget every year. Southern resolution is authorizing the county auditor transfer of funds from various county departments. This is for the print shop services. The eighth resolution is the transfer of...for the vehicle maintenance. The ninth resolution is authorizing the purchase of 6,400 gallons of regular unleaded gasoline. Port petroleum had the lowest bid price of $2.62 per gallon. The tenth resolution is amending the Medina County Drug Advisory Committee 2023 great guidelines. The next resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. And the final resolution is authorizing the payment of the county claims. This is an amount of $2,050,406.42.
Move to approve the 12 resolutions.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, next we have department updates, and we have Bethany Dentler from Economic Development.
Good morning.
Good morning.
While we are still finalizing all the results from our economic development efforts in 2022, I can safely say that last year was a record year for Medina County's economic development activity. I think we're going to see approximately $450 million in new capital investments in the county, and that's had a significant impact on consumer spending and sales tax growth in the county. We have an economic impact model that shows an estimated $16.6 million of new consumer spending in the professional and financial services industry. $15 million on households and housing construction, $7.5 million on transportation and utilities, $6.7 million in retail and entertainment, $4 million in healthcare, and $3.5 million on food and beverage. So it does have quite a wide-reaching impact. You can hear more about those results if you would like to join us for our member meeting this Thursday, where I'll be presenting a state of business in Medina County report with lots more facts and figures, and that's a promise. Looking at our level of business expansion activity in the pipeline for 2023, we've started off strong. In the first two weeks of January, we have been working with employers which are looking at expansion opportunities throughout Medina County, and this ranges from small production offices and operations to manufacturing to warehousing. These growth needs seem to be continuing even in the face of headlines about economic slowdown. Yes, we are seeing an uptick in job seekers, and some employees are tightening their belts so that they're in good shape to kind of weather the storm, but it feels like any layoffs that we've seen so far are actually being outpaced by the job openings that we're hearing about. On a monthly basis, the county's unemployment rate last year was either the same or below the prior year for eight out of 11 months. We're still waiting on December data, but I expect that the overall 2022 annual average unemployment rate to be well below 2021. The latest unemployment rate for Medina County was 3.4% as of November. We're still waiting on the December data, and that 3.4% is very low. Looking at the annual average unemployment rate from 1990 to 2021, the average rate for those three decades is 4.7%, and again, I anticipate 2022's annual average to be well below that figure. And I think there are several reasons why Medina County is well-positioned to handle any challenges that we'll face from the broader and, you know, the national and global economy. First, Medina County tends to weather recessionary storms really well. We have a solid business base of small to medium-sized companies in very diverse industry sectors, so all of our eggs aren't in one basket. And just based on what we've seen, many companies now know the importance of hanging on to their talent during an economic downturn so that they can quickly respond to market demand when the economy kicks back into high gear, and it will eventually. Business cycles still do exist. Second, manufacturers in Medina County have been diversifying into new markets and focusing on customization. We're also hearing a bit about acquisition opportunities where they're bringing, you know, companies that might be closing down somewhere else, they're bringing them into Medina County. And Medina County is not a very long distance from central Ohio, where Intel Semiconductor Chip Factory is being made. There has been a lot of interest in the overall state of Ohio because of this industry, and Medina County has both the land and infrastructure as well as access to a broader regional talent pool. So I think we're, you know, we're cognizant of the challenges that we're facing, but Medina County is in good shape to handle them. So we do anticipate that this year will be a good one overall, but I would ask you, please don't hold us to the same level of capital investment as we saw in 2022, because that's not going to happen. If it does, I'll be shocked. But just a few other updates on our activities at Medina County Economic Development Corporation. Community reinvestment area, the property tax abatement program. Over the next few months, most of our staff will be involved in that monitoring program. And for the benefit of our new commissioner, we manage 11 CRA programs in the townships on behalf of the county commissioners. We also handle reporting responsibilities for the CA programs in the Village of Seville and the City of Brunswick. We will be back in, you know, a few months to have you approve the recommendations of those housing councils, and we will send those reports to the state of Ohio before the end of March. One more note on CRAs, because we've been talking about this for a couple of years, it feels like. Senate Bill 33 was approved in lame duck session and signed by the governor, and at the last minute, they slipped in all of those changes, which weren't going anywhere in committee. It had been through two different bills, and they finally got it inserted in Senate Bill 33. That legislation will significantly change how CRAs are handled in the state of Ohio, and it will have an impact on our school districts and school funding. As much as I can, I'd like to see that Medina County's approach to CRA stays relatively the same, but we're going to have to, you know, see over the next couple of years if it changes, if it starts hurting our ability to be competitive and compete for new economic development opportunities, we're going to have to figure some things out. But I do appreciate Steve working with me to get some legal guidance from the prosecutor's office on how we might need to adapt Medina County's program to the new CRA provisions. In workforce, we've had a busy fall with student programs in partnership with local school districts. We help to organize and facilitate career fairs, mock interviews, soft skills classes that we recruited local business leaders to teach in, making those connections between young graduates looking for jobs and businesses right here. We want to keep that brain power here in the county as much as we can. We also have our new career coach, who started in July. He's been working with students on their career path options. He's already presented to or interacted with over 1,500 students in Medina County, so he's getting out there. Our Ways to Work Transportation Pilot now has 18 riders. We're full. There's a waiting list. And our pre-apprenticeship coordinator in this school year is now working with over 80 students to ensure they have a path to graduation. Brownfields Program, we worked through the Port Authority last year with the support of the commissioners, and by the end of the year, all the agreements were finally signed. We secured just over $938,000...I'm sorry, yeah, $938,000 in Brownfields Program grants from the state of Ohio. That represents nine redevelopment projects in six different jurisdictions in the county. That adds to the $3.6 million that the state awarded to one of our development partners in Liverpool Township. So that totals over $4.5 million of those state monies coming back to Medina County for development opportunities and redevelopment opportunities, and they are projected to create hundreds of new jobs. In terms of our regional partnerships, we're working with the Minority Business Assistance Center. It's based in Cleveland, but it covers Medina County. We call it MBACK, because everything has an acronym. MBACK is hosting an online workshop on how businesses can take advantage of becoming a certified minority business. That workshop is scheduled for Thursday, January 26th at 2:00 p.m., and Kathy Brighton-Butcher and I will join the MBACK director to share more about doing business in Medina County and our economic development resources. And my last update on our partnerships may be of particular interest to Commissioner Harrison. I serve on the Business Advisory Council for NOACA, and the staff presented late last month about the climate action plan they're developing. Their overriding goals are reduce...to reduce carbon emissions by over 60% by 2030 and to be at net-zero emissions in northeast Ohio by 2050. That could probably involve a lot of policy changes as they distribute those dollars. I'm working with Planning Director Denise Testa to put together a meeting with NOACA to bring them to Medina County to present information to our business community about that plan and how it could potentially impact how transportation funding is distributed and how we all do business. We definitely want our local businesses to provide feedback to NOACA before that plan is set in stone, so once we get that date, I'll make sure that you all have that. Just a couple of closing items. In upcoming events, we'd like to invite the county commissioners to join us at a Regional Economic Development Conference, known as ED NOW. It's being organized by Team Neo the morning of February 24th in Independence. That event targets an audiences...audience of elected leaders and economic development boards. They will provide a wealth of information about what's going on in the local economic development scene. This year's workshop will include a deep dive into the role that sites play in a vibrant economy, and the keynote speaker is Dr. Ned Hill, a professor of economic development at John Glenn College of Public Affairs at Ohio State. Ned Hill, if you've never heard him, you've got to come. He's a real treat. So once registration is open, I can forward that information. The only other item is to save the date. I wanted to mention that our 2022 Annual Meeting of Medina County Economic Development will be held the evening of Thursday, April 13th. We're still working on program details, but please put that on your calendar. That's my report, and I'll take any questions if you have any.
I'll just make a comment.
There you go, sorry.
Yeah, the CRA legislation, unfortunately, that was like at 2:00 a.m. on the last day that they were...when it was brought over in the House. Unfortunately, they ended up actually accepting without any changes that had produced in the original House version that were actually stalling in the Senate. And I know the school districts across the state were uniformly opposed to it, a lot of economic development directors that are monitoring and working with the various communities on these. I am very thankful that you're trying to work through this and obviously hopefully the prosecutor's office can assist us in trying to figure how we're going to minimize the negative impact that these could have on our school districts and the funding. Why didn't that go off?
Okay. I don't know why that...just...
Is the light on?
Yeah, the light's on. It was on before, so, okay. Anyway, so I'm very thankful you're working with that, and then obviously we'll continue to monitor that, and hopefully if we need to advocate for some changes, and I know there are a lot of parties that would like to change that. And regarding the NOACA global climate change agenda, as I understand that that public meeting that was held in Medina County and various areas was primarily one-way. It was more like a webinar with very little impact. Well, although the technology was there for two-way, my understanding is that the process of participation, they ignored a lot of questions from the public, basically. They had an agenda. They had a viewpoint that they want to stress without actually encouraging any input from the localities.
I did attend that webinar, and I would say that of the five counties that NOACA represents, there were twice as many people in the surrounding counties as there were from Cuyahoga County, which is probably the first time I've ever seen that kind of participation. There were very strong opinions, I would say, from over half of the participants, as we could type them into the online poll, and those were basically ignored, unfortunately. So I'm hoping that if we can bring them to Medina County, we can address directly some of the concerns that we have here.
I'm fearful that the presumptive policies that they're advocating basically are biased against any of the outlying counties.
Well, more than likely.
Yeah, all right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bethany. Next, we have Richard Nelson, our Chief Building Officer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome aboard. Well, indeed, '22 was a big year. Our value of commercial construction was up 131%. It was just amazing. Oddly, even though we did more homes...new homes in '22 than in the last three years, the value of those homes remained pretty steady with the overall value of last year. Interesting. And then, in fact, when you look at numbers backwards, the average cost of new homes over 20...during 2022 was $371,000. In '21, the average was $454,000, and in '20, the average was $390,000. So it's...they can get skewed when we have three-unit buildings, and they...we count them as an individual dwelling unit, but the cost to build that three-unit building, you know, is much lower per unit. So they can get skewed, but still, it's hard to figure sometimes those numbers. But regardless, commercial was way up. We had a new line on page one under New Home Starts. We're going to start giving you year-to-date numbers on new homes. They're always on page three and available, but we're going to start putting it on the front page. So this...in this line here now, it shows new dwellings year-to-date December, and of course, you look down across there, and it's all...all just matches the end-of-year numbers, but in future months coming up, that'll...that'll, you know, be a running count year-to-date new homes. Second page, receipts for the month of December were quite high. Third page, our overall year-to-date receipts, again, were quite high, up 28% due to largely all the commercial work that got done. Our total receipts up to $1,477,000. Big year. And breakdowns on the townships, and the last page is the commercial projects done in December of '22, or permits issued in December of '22. Pretty good-sized list there. And so our review times remain good.
Good.
Residential, barely three days, and we're at about 21 days on commercial. So we're doing good. We...again, '22 is an amazing year, so we look forward to seeing what 2023 brings us. We've got a new school that's coming in from Wadsworth, probably where that...
Right.
Quite a large project. Timing of that's good, because we're, you know, past...we'll be past a lot of this commercial work we're doing currently, so hopefully that'll work out. Should work out. Timing-wise, quite good. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Eric Hange, Soil and Water District Manager.
So our office will have our first board meeting of the year tomorrow at 1:30, and thank you, Mr. Hambley. He'll be there to swear in two new board members. Zach Albrecht and Jeff Van Loon were re-elected to three-year terms on our board. Our SWCD January newsletter went out last week. I actually brought a copy for each of you. Inside, you'll find stuff on our native plant sales. This year, we have four different kits, $50 apiece depending on what kit you order. We have a pollinator kit, woodland shade kit, deer-resistant kit, and a rain garden kit. You can order up to May 12th, and pickups will be on May 19th and 20th. Our annual seedling sales are the green sheet that you'll see within our newsletter. You can order now through March 31st. Our pickup will be at Geigs Orchard on Route 3 on April 28th and 29th. A big thank you to Geigs Orchard. They are continual support for our office. After 31 years with the district, Beth Schnabel has taken her second retirement. We wish her well. I know she's going to be doing a lot more traveling and spending time with her family. Our office has decided to not replace her position, but divide her duties among the remaining staff. An update on the Muskingham Watershed Conservation District Cover Crop Program. Our office was able to distribute $3,497 to producers in the Muskingham Watershed District for 291 and a half acres planted in new cover crops this fall. This does not include two of our board members, who are also in the program but overseen by another county. Our conservation educator, Kelly Dockerty, secured a $2,500 Dominion Energy Grant for the purpose of funding an invasive plant trade-in program with the focus on calorie pair, which as of January 7th is now illegal to sell in Ohio. The grant will cover costs for purchasing the replacement trees and shrubs, as well as assist in development of workshops and public education events to support the program to remove invasives within the county. The Rocky River Watershed Council has also donated an additional $1,500 for this campaign. Upcoming events, January 25th, the Rocky River Watershed Council's annual meeting. Our own Kelly Dockerty will be presenting there. And our annual Phase 2 meeting to discuss results of the 2022 programming will take place on February 23rd. As always, if any group or municipality needs any presentations regarding anything conservation, you could always give our office a call.
Thank you, Eric.
Any question?
Thank you.
Excellent.
Welcome.
Okay. We have a few commissioner resolutions. First of all, we have accommodation resolution commending Donna Gore for her years of service with Medina County Job and Family Services, whereas it has come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that Donna Gore is retiring Medina County Job and Family Services February 1st, 2023. Donna has been employed with Medina County for 31 years. The Board of County Commissioners was just to recognize and honor Donna for her commitment and diligent work to Medina County and for her ongoing dedication to providing exceptional customer service to Medina County residents. Since January 6, 1992, Donna has served in the following capacities: receptionist, payment clerk, data processor, location clerk, and support officer one. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, that Donna El Gore be and is hereby commended for her years of service with Medina County Job and Family Services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Thank you very much for your service, Donna. Our second resolution commendation is commending Cheryl Scheck for her years of service with Medina County Job and Family Services, whereas it has come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that Cheryl Scheck is retiring from the Medina County Job and Family Services February 1st, 2023. Cheryl has been employed with Medina County for 36 years. The Board of County Commissioners was just to recognize and honor Cheryl for her commitment and diligent work to the Medina County...in Medina County and for her ongoing dedication to providing exceptional customer service to Medina County residents. Since June 30, 1986, Cheryl has served in the following capacities: secretary for the Planning Commission, typist one, typist two, account clerk one, account clerk two, income maintenance worker two, income maintenance worker three, income maintenance supervisor, eligibility services supervisor, and business administrator since 2004 for Job and Family Services. Cheryl has also previously served on the Medina County Home Advisory Council, prepared taxes for clients using the Ohio Benefits Bank system, and was a former foster parent. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County that Cheryl Scheck be and is hereby commended for her years of service with Medina County Job and Family Services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Again, Cheryl, thank you for your service. Okay, next we have a resolution appointing county commissioners to the various committees and areas of responsibility for the year 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Okay. Just making sure data board was not under me. Second. A resolution appointing member to the Transportation Improvement District. It has come to attention to the Board of Medina County Commissioners that there is vacancy on the TID Board due to an unexpected passing of a member. The Medina County Board of Commissioners has designated Paul Barnett to serve on the TID, and Mr. Barnett has agreed to serve on said board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Next, we have a resolution appointing commissioners alternate for the Medina County Planning Commission for 2023. The Medina County Commissioners are members of the Medina County Planning Commission and desire to have alternates in attendance at meetings that they are unable to attend. Tom James previously served as former Commissioner William F. Hudson's alternate for the Planning Commission and has expressed interest in serving as Erin M. Harrison's alternate.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Okay, next we have public comment. Does anybody have any public comments? John, come on up.
John Burke, Medina County Treasurer, just a public service announcement. Property tax bills went out Friday and Saturday, so everybody should be receiving them this week. If you don't get a property tax bill, please call our office, 330-725-9748. We'll be happy to get you one. Also, you can go online at medinacountytreasure.com and find your property tax bill there. The due date will be February 10th, and I should mention, too, the property taxes this year that we billed were $392,954,351. Now, that's up 10.9% from last year, $354,316,439. That's primarily due to the auditor's triennial update appraisal, which happened last year and affected this year's taxes, because we pay taxes one year in arrears. So values went up approximately about 27%. Taxes, of course, don't reflect that proportionally. I mean, it's less than that, 10.9%. I mean, it's less than that, it's 10.9%, but most property tax bills will have gone up. To pay your taxes, you can mail it in, of course. Now, if you mail it in, make sure the postmark is on that envelope by the February 10th due date. That's why I tell some people, just don't drop it in the mailbox. Go in, especially if you're mailing it that last day and get the postmarked on it, because that's what we look at to make sure it's received here on time. Even if we get it a couple of days later, if it's postmarked February 10th, you're okay. You can do it online, as I said, at medinacountytreasure.com. Look under Search and Pay Taxes. If you pay by electronic check, it's a $1.50 fee. You can pay by credit card or PayPal. They charge 2.5% that goes right to the vendor on the bill, so we don't have a lot of people do that. But I will mention that PayPal has a Pay Credit, which you pay your 2.5%, you get it paid, but if you pay it back within six months, there's no interest. So that does help some people if they're in a pinch to pay it at that time. You also have drop boxes. We have drop boxes outside my office at the Administration Building here, at the Lowdi Library, and at City Halls in Brunswick and Wadsworth, and those are open 24/7. You can drop your payment in there. And of course, you can pay in person at our office. We're open from 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, on the due date of February 10th. We always stay open until 6:00 p.m., so it gives people a little extra time to make that tax payment. Any questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, we're going to move on to discussion session. Jeremy, do you have anything?
Took me a week to get warmed up here. Two things. One, our 1-megawatt generator at the Liverpool plant that is in need of repair. We have a contract with Martin Energy. They shall be, they should be in, I think, in the next week to actually haul it back to Pennsylvania where they can work on it at their shop. When they take that one out, they're going to look at our other 1-megawatt generator there. We feel that there's going to need to be repairs done on that one, so once they repair this one, get that one reinstalled, the idea is that they would take the other one back and make whatever necessary repairs at that time, so we're working on that. And then also, we're moving to certifications on delinquent bills, so that, we're going to do January 15th. So by the time we get the process done, check all the accounts, it'll probably be about a month or so from now that we'll look to be certifying those delinquent amounts. And then also, just a quick happy birthday shout-out to Dawn Frye over at HR today, so I told her I would, she asked me not to do it, so. I think she turns 38 or 37 today.
Are you married?
Not for long.
You don't do that.
That's all I have. All right, thanks.
Richard, do you have anything? Dan, do you have anything? Eric? Steven? Holly? Erin?
I want to just say, I guess publicly, thank you to everybody, both from department heads around and also internally in the Commissioner's Office. It was a good first week, and I attribute that to a lot of help from a lot of people who really know their stuff. When Representative Ray was here last week, she mentioned how great the employees are, and that's been my impression the first week here. So thank you to everybody for a quick and thorough transition into the role.
Okay, Steve?
Nothing.
Me neither. We have executive session, so...
Yeah, we move that we go into executive session for the purpose to consider the compensation and employment of a public employee and to consider the appointment of a public official.
Second.
Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Okay, we'll be going to executive session. We'll come back, but we will no longer be on camera, so everybody have a great week. Thank you.